You know the process?
I'm Beverly Compton, 1317 Ocean Boulevard West. Again, I don't have a presentation. Oh, thank you very, thank you very much Beverly Compton, 1317 O B W. I don't have a presentation, so it just, I don't understand how public comments can be made, but I do see on the second item that there's something about the pier. So I will mention that for me personally, I'm not speaking for anybody else right now. But I don't feel the same about the pier. I feel less optimistic about the pier, given the information that we already have. So I'm personally still not supporting that purchase, and I hope somebody does. But I hope I don't have to. I think they just can, sort of, we paid about $5,000 in accommodations tax, so you can take my part out of that. Okay. The other thing was that Brian, you had made some comment about H B P O A, and I'm on the board, and I want us to do a good job, and I want us to cooperate with the town. And just to be sure that you know, we're not a political action group. I think we have all kinds of mostly affiliate, unaffiliated people, to tell you the truth, but, um, all parties. But reading from our bylaws, the purposes for which the corporation is organized are to promote the planned and controlled development of Holden Beach within the concept of a family beach, including but not limited to: the adoption of a comprehensive land use plan, zoning ordinances, subdivision ordinances, the provision of adequate water and sewage, sewerage, sewerage facilities, erosion control measures, protection of the environment, sand dunes, marsh vegetation, restrictions upon excessive commercialization, and provision of access to public areas, all for the purpose of protecting the health, safety, and welfare of property owners at Holden Beach, and for the purpose of protecting the value, both economic and aesthetic, and usefulness of the property of each member. This was done before I came, and I, I think I understand from the mayor that this was a community action that caused this organization to be incorporated. Many people have served on it during the time. I don't know if anybody wants to add anything to that.
You're a lovely lady and a good citizen, but you're out of order. You must talk about the items on the agenda. You're speaking specifically of your organization.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Compton.
We love you, Beverly. Anybody else want to speak? Yes, sir.
Good morning, all. Jim Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. First off, I, we can see by the few people here, in fact, I think the actual, the city employees actually out, they actually outnumber the citizens. Friday morning with 24 hours' notice, I kinda, that, that kind of rubs me the wrong way. The next thing is, is we have to talk about reason, and we have to talk about reasonableness with this. The pier, as it is, is nothing more than an eyesore and a liability. It's been, it's been, it's been here for a long time, and a lot of people love it, but you have to look at everything, everything that a corp, a corporation, a city, a family is doing, is, is there, is there a risk reward return on this? It can't pay for itself. It, you're talking about $500,000 just to make it back to a rickety old structure that's past its prime. And I really think it's time to, rather than say we have to get this done, we have to get this done, we have to get this done, no, I, I, I don't think that we have to. I think what we have to do is we have to say with, in Holden Beach, when properties are flying off the market in less than, in less than a day, why are these particular parcels just sitting there? Probably because they're overpriced, which is once again another risk reward basis that we could, that could be considered. But I think it's time to take a step back. I think it's time to not have meetings on Friday mornings with virtually no representatives of, of the community here. I think it's time to say, let's have a moratorium on this. Let's have a, a real meeting at a time where people are notified about it, and let's have, let's have a real discussion about this, because what you, what we're talking about is we're talking about something that is already a, past its prime, and has got a required maintenance that it will never be able to pay for. There's, nobody looks this way on the beach and says, man, if only there was a pier there, that would be a beautiful beach. This is a beautiful beach, with or without the pier. And thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak? Yes, sir.
Chad Hawk, 1222 Ocean Boulevard West. First time ever here, so I appreciate it. Um, I'll tell you why my wife and I aren't for the pier, the pier purchase, and it's purely for two reasons. One is fiscal responsibility. We look at it from a, from a fiscal point of view and say, as, I forget your name, I'm sorry, gentleman, said, how do you pay, how does it pay for itself? And are, and is the city in, in actually, the situation where it should be paying for something long-term and taking all of our citizens, all of the people who want to generate here, that's their debt to take on for the rest of Holden Beach's history. That's the first question. Second one is, you know, without a true plan that you can present to all the citizens of what you're really trying to do, a long-term plan, you're actually trying to do the old Field of Dreams, build it, and they will come. And I feel like you should have a plan before you decide to spend something. We all complain about government, we all complain about ourselves, about spending money without having plans. This is one of those cases, in our opinion. That's all, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak?
Dean Nelson, 746 O B W. I found out about this meeting yesterday on Facebook. Did not find that this meeting was well advertised or published. There's a periodic newsletter that comes out from Holden Beach that most everybody gets. So I, I find that this, you know, was not well advertised, which is reflective of why we have such few representatives here from ownership in the island. I have no bias one way or the other regarding the pier purchase, or some of the other lots that were notified on Facebook here the other day. There's three or four other properties. So I don't have a, a particular opinion on that, but I would say that we should share with the public what the financials are, you know, in terms of being able to recoup purchase price, and why are we doing this to begin with? Why are we being considered to purchase these properties? From what I read on, on Facebook, the pier does have substantial defects to it, and would cost a substantial amount to repair it and bring it up to safety standards. And so it's, it's a question of why should the, the town be purchasing some of these properties versus, you know, it being privately purchased? So I'd like the town board to share this information, not just here at this meeting, but at a meeting that is more largely publicized, such that we can get better feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, thank you all for your comments. Number three on the agenda...
Excuse me. I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we flip the agenda. We have seven or eight citizens out here who would have to, we, we would go into closed session if we followed the agenda the way it is, so they'd have to sit around and wait for us to come out to actually hear the agenda item that's going to be open to the public. So I would just suggest that we flip it, have the second item now, and the closed session follow the open session item.
I'm a little confused, because we're on the third, third item already.
I, I get you, and that's executive session. And so we would go into closed executive session, and these people would have to sit around until we finish that session before they would hear what they could, we would have in number four, which is going to be an open session. I think they, we should do the open session.
I guess I'm thick-headed this morning. Are you saying that you want number four to be the next item on the agenda, not number three?
Yes.
And you're making that a motion?
Yes.
And I second that as well, because our town attorney did say that she had a time limitation today. Not that I assume it's going to last that long, but out of consideration for her, I would propose that we, I would second the proposal for putting four before three.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Discussion.
I already stated the reason I believe we should do this. Discussion.
All right, all right. Anyone oppose? Then by unanimous consent, we will go to item number four on the agenda, unless somebody has a problem with the chair's decision. So item number four, Commissioner Sullivan and Ms. Pat, you two have the floor.
Yes. At the last discussion, or our last meeting on the pier, we received the last of the due diligence documents, which was, of course, the pier inspection report. At the same time, we did have some questions about the deliverables that are designated in the contract that should be provided by the seller to the buyer, and I'm quoting from the contract, "as soon as reasonably possible after the execution of the contract." So there were supposed to be copies of a number of documents if available. The town attorney was looking into these. I had requested a, a statement of if we have it, if they have it, and are we getting it? And if they don't have it, we should know that in writing so that when all of this is over with, there are no outstanding questions of, well, what about this? And I know the town attorney was working on that, so I would ask simply for the town attorney to go through the item five deliveries list and say which ones are available that we have or will have, and which ones we have been told officially are not available.
Yes, and that information, I've been asking for it, the fellow attorney on about the pier, for Tuesday, maybe relevant to that. So I'm waiting on the confirmation coming in, but we are working on that. I would definitely see that.
Okay. I then want to speak a little bit about the purchase of the pier. Several times, I have asked, Commissioner Sullivan has asked, for a business plan from the proponents of this purchase. We're not being difficult, we are not being antagonistic. This is necessary in order to give the public what you are logically requesting, which is, show us how you're going to do this, what you're going to do, and how it's going to be paid for. Because nobody wants to suddenly have a tax increase or an assessment when they've been under the illusion that this was all going to be taken care of from grants and B part. And I'm sorry, that has been quoted by some people, and that was the impression at the beginning that was left. I have reached out particularly to Commissioner Murdock, who I believe, as a contractor, as someone who knows construction, is probably one of the best people to give a several year, here's what it might take, here's what it's going to be, here's what it might cost. Because only then can we look at the finances of the town and say, can this work? I've handed to everybody, just pulled out of audit reports, pulled out of the budget, what we currently have on hand in different funds, what is going to be needed over the next years to pay down debt and for major capital expenditures from the general fund and the B part fund. Having this and knowing yearly costs is how we can put together a business plan. I can do this. I can't come up with an estimate of what it might take, other than going to the literature, going to Google, and finding old piers and what it's taken to put them back together. And again, I am not the best qualified person to then say, is that accurate against today's reality or not? I think there are other members of the board who have been pushing for this, that they could do that. So I am perfectly ready to sit down and try to put together numbers, but I only have what the town finance situation is, which I'm going to tell you is not dire, but we do face a lot of expenses in the next few years, so everything has to be balanced. And if people would have cooperated and put together a, here is what I think it's going to be, my best guess, as somebody who knows construction, we could have had something a month ago, or definitely this month, but again, in the town packet, I see absolutely nothing from the people who are pushing for this, in terms of saying, here's how we think this will play out. So I'm willing to cooperate. I have tried. I don't know what else to do, other than to say, until I see what it's going to take to bring this back, and then what the plan is to make it whole in 10 to 15 years, I can't support it. It's not that I, I'm against it, but I can't support it, because I only have a part of the equation. Thank you.
Ms. um, sure. Let, let me just say, thank you to the, to the people in the audience for showing up, and I, I too think that the brief period between the notification and the meeting was on call for. I called for a meeting. I asked that the board be polled the availability for a meeting on October 28th, to discuss the pier and what we should do after we received the inspection report from A T M. No response. None.
I respond.
First, I'm sorry. There was nothing. I was told nothing could be done the first week. I said, do something for the second week. I heard nothing from that period of time. I have no idea who responded, who didn't, I heard nothing. But this Monday, I got a, a notification that there was going to be this meeting. And so the only reason that the pier property is on this agenda is because the first item on the agenda was called for a meeting, and we were able to add the second one. I don't think that's right, and I really appreciate you folks being there at 8 o'clock in the morning. And the reason that I wanted to have the meeting was, the report from A T M specifically stated, and remember, that that inspection didn't even do an inspection under the waterline. So above the waterline, it found damages of $500,000 to $750,000. And I think that before we go through with this, the whole purpose of the due diligence was to detect any defects in the pier, that we should go back to the seller and, and request a reduction in the price based on that report. And I want the board, I'm, I want to make a motion that we request a reduction of $500,000 based on the, on the report that we got from A T M, the inspection report, before we go through with the purchase of this property, and we have to make that decision before next Friday, which is the 19th, which is the end of the due diligence period. The other thing I'd like to say is that I appreciate you all being here, but this isn't enough. And I know I'm preaching to the choir. If you are in opposition to this purchase, for whatever the reason is, or if you are in support of the purchase, we've all asked for input, and I believe we all meant that when we, when we asked for it. Whatever your position is, this decision, whether we purchase it or we don't purchase it, is going to affect the island for the foreseeable future. And everybody should get up off their couch and come to the meeting Tuesday night, because that meeting has been scheduled since last year. The item is on it, it's out there. So when people say they don't have an opportunity, sometimes they're right, but sometimes they're not. So I would suggest that you get your friends and your neighbors, and you show up on Tuesday, and you let us know what you think about this purchase, when all the information is available, because we have to make a decision by Friday. There's no, there's no more time for discussion and debate. The time to make the decision has arrived. So I would make the motion that we go back to the seller, ask for a reduction in price of $500,000 based on the findings of the A T M inspection report.
I will second that motion.
All right, floor is open for discussion. There are none, I've got some.
I don't have a problem with that, Mike, but I think you know the answer. But we can certainly try, so I don't have a problem with that. What I do have a problem with is the misinformation of this purchase being spread around the island. There happens to be a pier on the property that we're purchasing. We are gonna, that would be a part of the purchase, the pier will be a part of the purchase. I understand that 100 percent. I never expected, not one time, not the first day, not the second day, not the second week, to get a good inspection on that, that building, and we didn't. But I never expected that. I was attending a meeting right here, sitting in this chair, and listened to an Army Corps engineered guy that said, and he didn't, he didn't misquote anything, and I don't think I misheard it, that we have to have public access to that beach from one end to the other, at various locations, parking, accesses, all that type of stuff, to qualify for them to maintain this island. The sand on the beach, the engineered projects, the engineered project that we've already done, it's my understanding that FEMA's no longer going to do it, that sand replacement's not going to be in their forte, and we've paid to have a study done by the Army Corps Engineers, so they're not going to do it. I don't know why we paid for that study. In the past, this town has spent money for parking studies, over and over and over again. They've had the chance to acquire properties, such as all the properties that we're going to talk about today in executive session. They've had the chance to buy them already at a much, much lower price, and it's been shot down by some people sitting up here right now. Just some very horrible missed opportunities that I can't talk about, because it's in executive session. But I wish I could. I wish this wasn't an executive session, and I wish everybody could hear it. Pat knows the business plan, she says she doesn't, but she does. So in order to fund a purchase, such as the pier property, we have to have revenue. There was no other way to get it, and we certainly don't intend, I don't think any of us sitting up here intend to raise taxes on any resident of the island. I've said it over and over and over again, I don't know why, I don't know why people don't get it, that that's not our intention. So the idea was, and still is, paid parking was to help fund projects like this land acquisition, things of this nature, and afford us the ability to pay for it. You know, obviously, we're not going to be able to write a check the first year, we don't even have, we don't even have it in place yet, and we're just tossing around the idea. But if we could put paid parking in place, that would be the revenue stream upwards of, from our selected parking vendor, somewhere around $600,000. And we get, correct me if I'm wrong, David, I believe 70 percent of that. So that's enough money to make the payment on the pier. If we finance it, what, 1 and 1/2 percent or something like that, it's almost free money. It's the last chance to buy a section of property, and I don't know where else you're going to find one, in the middle of the island, to replace the parking opportunity that's there. That is the main reason for this purchase. The second reason for this purchase, in my opinion, is to afford an emergency access and a access, a permanent access, to the middle of the island for all those canal residents on, on, on every canal street down through there. That is the, the only access, and Gil Bass has been so nice over the years to let us use that. I've heard people eminent domain condemn it, take it. We still have to pay them for it, if we took it, and it's going to be at a, you know, because the motion brought lots of soul for $700,000, and it's going to be a steep price, just to pay for 20 feet or 30 feet, if you could even do it that way. I'm not an attorney, so I don't know. But to take someone's property is, just seems crazy. So if you take the, the beach access out, and I believe we have a grant in place of a couple hundred thousand dollars are coming, and I, I may be out of line misquoting this stuff, but I believe we have one coming for a couple hundred thousand dollars, that is a grant to help us with that access, the purchase of it and the construction of it. So that takes about $450,000 out of the equation, if you separate that access from the pier property purchase. I've heard that it's a teardown. It's not a teardown, that building can totally be fixed, replaced, rebuilt, right where it's at. There's people, at least two, that I know, that have approached me to rent the building in the condition that it's in, and fix it theirself, with their funds and their money. So would you like to go by the pier and have a nice, newer-looking facility there? I don't necessarily want to privatize it and, and have somebody do that, because I think it's well more, it, it would be way better used by the public, for a, a viewing area, a wedding venue, a place to have a sunrise service, all of that stuff. I think the public should keep, I think we should put some restroom facilities there. I think, I think it could be a really nice place. Would it take some money? Sure, absolutely. Would it take a ton? We've got a really nice picnic shelter over there that costs less than $100,000, I believe. I might be wrong on that. So it can be done. It could be an open deck, it could be just a covered shelter. I mean, it's going to be affected by storms and all that stuff. We, I, as a contractor, build oceanfront houses, a lot of you guys own one, so it definitely could be taken at any, anytime. We, we know that. As far as the pier goes, there's been piers that have received grants to be rebuilt. That pier can be repaired and rebuilt and placed. It can be repaired 10 feet a year, 20 feet a year, board by board. Porson could be opened, where the rest of the pier remain closed if it's unsafe. I bet you we could get it repaired, at least to where you could walk out to the ocean. That pier's in every picture. Y'all, y'all look at Facebook all the time to find out about these meetings and stuff. That pier's in just about every one of them. Everybody walks on the beach, every photo that families take on, that pier's in a lot of them, a, a bunch. To say that that pier doesn't mean anything to the residents of this island is posters. It does. Every, you want everybody on those canal streets at the next meeting. We're not going to have room in here, we need to have it outside, but that's fine. The public hearing that night was 18 to 3, in favor of purchasing the pier. Some of them had conditions. Some people had conditions. They want a business plan. I hit the cliff notes on it. I think we can pull it off. We don't have time on these properties. They're all for sale. All the properties that we're looking at right now are for sale right now. And man, just said it, they're flying off the market. So if they fly off the market, then paid parking's not going to work, and we're not going to be able to pull this all together. So our permanent parking spaces on the island right now are like 190. And the only other parking that we can charge for is your right-of-way parking. All you guys love that, right? You all love it. You're in the, in the west end, most of you, so, sitting here, and you don't have that problem. On this side of that gate, we have that problem. People park wherever they can put a car. The thing about now is, even if they park there, they're going to have to pay. But that's going to be the only, the only property that we're going to have for parking, because all the other properties that's available right now are going to be sold, gone. And we won't be able to do it, unless those people turn around and resell it. Everybody's doom and gloom here lately, and I don't understand that, because I'm not a very positive person generally, and I see a lot of hope in that place. I, I can almost pick... I, I, I can almost picture what that facility could be. And not only for the residents of the island, but for everybody in the country to enjoy if they wanna come to hold the beach. And I realize that's what some, some people aren't about, that, but that's, everybody has an opinion, and I'm sitting up here with my own. And I want somebody's kid 20 years from now to be able to walk out on that pier and catch a spider or whatever they wanna do. I definitely want it to be safe, and I understand it'll take a little money every year, but hopefully the, the revenue from the parking would never go away, and it, we could afford to spend 100 or 200 or 300,000 dollars on it a year to keep that thing in good shape, or maybe get you a little bit farther out into the ocean. We're not gonna be able to do it all at one time. That's, we, we just won't have the money. But it's, it's kind of a long-term thing. But unfortunately, the first thing you have to do is acquire the property, which they don't make any more of, and once there's five or six houses built there, you'll never have the opportunity to do this again. Now, I didn't say we're gonna take it out of B part, we, we have to spend a certain amount out of B part on things like that for people to have access to the beach, that's what the funds for. A certain amount, we don't have to, I mean, I don't see any problem using a little bit of B part to, to pay for public facilities, we've done it in the, in the whole history of the beach. Nobody's said anything about, oh, we're gonna raise taxes to pay for the pier, I don't think anyone up here has said that. It, is it a possibility? Sure, if everything goes wrong. Well, we're gonna, that's what our job is up here, to make sure that that doesn't happen. I don't wanna pay it either. I didn't wanna pay the sewer assessment, I didn't wanna pay any of that stuff that all the past overruns this town has, Central Reach Project, and you could just pile it on, I mean, we, we've paid enough. Paid canal dredging and all that stuff, I mean, it's, it's a lot. And when you're on a fixed, I totally understand it. And I will do the best I can to finance this thing, the absolute best that I can do. I think I can do it. But, you know, the first thing you have to have is a chance. Pat's a planner, she has to have everything in place before something happens. Well, the, the catch-22 of that stipulation is that the property just might not be there anymore. So whatever business plan you take all the time you want to develop, then the property's gone, you did it all for nothing. And that's just my opinion. But I want the right information to be out there, and I feel like, and I, I did mention HBPOA, but I feel like it, it is, it is, it's definitely a letter sent out or email sent out that's an opinion, and I don't, I, I've never done that, I mean, I probably, I probably should, but I don't do that because it, it has a lot of facts in it, the reports, I mean, if you just sent out the report and the comment, here's the report back from the pier, but it, it seems like you fired up a train to get everybody on board not to, not to do something. And I didn't fire up a train to get people on board to do something. I think, I, I mean, I can't put this information out there that I have in front of me that I know all of it because I don't know my legal, you know, when you talk about executive sessions, you, you can't leave here and go talk about something. I, I wish it was all public. I'll put it on the agenda, and I'll talk about it to people as far as from here to the waterway. But I think a lot of people do support it, I've talked to a ton of people that do support it, or they want it, nobody wants to see an increase in taxes or anything, but when you're bringing in enough, provided we can acquire enough land to park on to make paid parking viable, there will be enough money paid for it, according to the, the vendor that we've retained, you know, to, to talk about what we could possibly make off a park. I wanna get rid of right-of-way parking, I, I absolutely hate seeing people stuff cars everywhere they can, and I'm trying to do that. And I would love any suggestion from any person on where we put these cars if they don't park in the right-of-way. To think that you're gonna stop people from coming over here, it's just not gonna happen. They, I don't want parking to be high either, I don't want, I don't wanna put a burden on it, on everybody that, that comes over here. I, I want it to be reasonable, and I want it to be affordable. But I mean, unfortunately, to acquire property like this, they're gonna have to pitch in. Everybody's gonna have to buy their season pass, they're, they're gonna have to do their part so we can provide these facilities for the public. They're gonna have to help us. It's not, we can't do it as, as the residents of the town ourselves, we have to have some help, and that's, that's just touching on my ideas. And I don't want you guys to think we don't have some sitting up here because we've kinda thought it through a little bit, but things have to, you can't say it in concrete because it's not in concrete yet, it's just, we're hopeful that we can get all this done, and we're hopeful that that money will go to pay for all this stuff. So we, we definitely are not throwing you guys to the wolves. We don't expect it to be a burden on this town. I'm not denying one bit that it, it could go wrong, but I'm hopeful that it never will, and I'm hopeful that it would be a great facility for, for people to, to come and enjoy for many years to come, and not a ice war, not a, you know, not a, we're, our intentions are definitely not to leave it sit. I, I just don't think this town would do that. I think we have people, talented people that, that, and we can make this work. We all gotta get on the same page though, and, and the same book, or close to the same page. So that's what it takes to all come together to try to make this work. I would welcome everybody's ideas. I, and I hear the opposition, and that is perfectly fine with me. I, I, I really don't have a problem with, with the opposition, I, I hear it, and I am listening. It's just my opinion that that's a, that, that'll leave a hu, a big hole in this, this island if we lose it. And it's my opinion, and I justify my opinion. So I'm not gonna please everybody to understand that. I just want you guys to know that I'm not sitting up here blind to the fact that it, it's gonna cost, if you take the access out, it's gonna cost 2.7 million dollars. That's a lot of money. But I think I can make it work at a percent and a half interest.
All right, any more comments?
Brian, I have, I know that you believe that this can happen, and I know that the paid parking, if it can come through, is part of this. The one thing, important thing in the equation that has not been addressed, that helps do the planning, is estimates of what it's gonna cost by year for the next four or five years. That is what enables us to actually feel confident and firm about how we move forward. Again, if we have year by year estimates of this is how much we're gonna put into it, as you say, do it 10 or 20 feet at a time, whatever you have to do, then we can look at our existing revenues, our existing funds, and whether or not within those funds money can be used as well, not just you have to find more revenue. That's why I have been asking for months, months, for just a ballpark, what is it gonna be year by year after the purchase to do what needs to be done to get it to something that can be used, then if it's year by year, improve it, improve it, if it's, we do what we have to, to give that 10-year longer life, and then after that, we can do a redo of the pier, that's another way of looking at it. But time after time, I reach this roadblock on anybody giving an estimate of what it might cost between now and, say, 2027, which is when the Central Reach Project is paid off, and after that, we can expect to have more free revenue to do things. So to say we can do this revenue is fine, but without a cost against it, it's extremely difficult to justify that people should not be concerned, and that is still what we're missing. So that's why I have a hard time supporting this. I see all the benefits of keeping that place open. I see where people feel attached to the pier, if there's enough of them that feel that, then yeah, we should do this because we listen to what our, our, our owners want. But we don't have construction numbers, I would say, we don't have that. I'm gonna need $300,000 a year for four years to do what is necessary on the pier and on the building. So you can say $600,000 is gonna come from parking, I haven't seen that yet, but I don't, I don't, no, I haven't, because it was only your parking committee on Friday where things started to get out, and it's not in the packet for Tuesday's meeting, there's no numbers there. But $600,000 a year, great, but there's nothing to, to put against it to say, and this would be the cost of improvements plus the cost of the borrowing. So we only have part of the equation, and that is not, that is not enough, that is not enough, we need a fuller equation here. And I'm sorry if my being a planner is a problem, but that is what it takes for us not to get in financial difficulty and become one of those beach towns that suddenly is struggling to do the basics of life.
Any more comments for discussion?
Yeah, I, I'd like to, to make some comment. You know, Brian is passionate about, about this item, and this is what democracy is about, right? You elect us, and we have different, differing opinions, and we have some serious debate about it. At the end of the day, it shouldn't be just the five of us deciding what's going, we will, we represent you, so that's why we've asked for input. But I have to disagree with Pat. I don't, I don't think either side of this purchase has been explained. Brian just spoke for 15 minutes, and within that 15 minutes, there were a lot of, we could do this, we might do that, if we get this, this'll be okay, there's nothing definitive. And the idea that we have to rush into it, that pier's been for sale any number of times, this idea could have been brought forward five years ago, but it wasn't. So now it's brought forward now, and we, we're supposed to rush into it. Let me just say, I, I don't have the, the statute in front of me now, but on-street parking can't be used for the pier. That's the law. We'd have to get a change from the state government in order to use the money that Brian's talking about. That's just one, this, this is like a house of cards or Jenga, if you pull out one piece, the rest of it collapses on, on top, right? So if we, if we can't use the money to finance the pier, the plan doesn't work. If we can't purchase the property, the plan doesn't work. I wasn't gonna talk about this, but Brian kinda spoke about the parking. We haven't spoken to the people who live on the east end to see if those people want to have 200, 300 more cars coming there every weekend. I don't think the people, we, as a, as a board, before Brian was on it, we had a debate, we must have had six different meetings about parking in the right-of-way. And the plan that's in place now is the plan that the people of this town wanted. You can, you can protect your property and keep people from parking on it, but you can utilize it yourself, right? All you have to do is put up the rope in the state, take it down when you wanna use it, put it back when you don't want people parking in your place. I don't understand it. I don't understand the idea of changing the character of this town from a small town. I mean, if you wanted more, you could, you could go to Wilmington, you could go to Wrightsville Beach, you could go to Myrtle Beach if you wanted commercial, if you wanted more. People come here after looking at the other islands and say, no, I want this quaint, quiet town. So I don't want to have an extra whatever number of people come in every weekend parking in front of my house. I don't need that. Who, who's gonna continue to pay that, the kind of money that people are paying to live here if, if, when you go to the beach, you can't find a place to put your blanket? So this, this goes to the preservation of the character of the town as well as the economics of the town. And what I heard today is a passionate argument to do something, but it doesn't have the underpinnings that it, that's necessary for us to go forward knowing it can be suc, sure, it might be successful, but think about it, since, since we've been talking about this, the original, we have to have it, was an emotional plea, we need this pier because it has this connection to the town. When I was a boy, I used to fish on that pier with my dad, or my granddad, or I wanted it. Now, that plea has, that's gone, we don't even need it anymore. And, and the other thing is, the price of the pier, the, we asked to get the, we have a license to go there for, for public safety and for people to get to the beach. We asked to purchase that piece of property that we now use, and the buyer, uh, the seller, I'm sorry, the seller, who's a good businessman, said, nah, I don't wanna do that, I wanna sell this middle portion, this portion that has the pier, which is a damn white elephant, and nobody else wants to buy the surrounding property because nobody knows what kind of liability that pier is gonna bring. So yeah, we're gonna buy this property, and yeah, that pier is part of that property, and yeah, that liability is gonna become ours once we purchase it. So we have to look at, what I want, I'm not a dreamer, I'm a facts guy, give me the facts. If you can show me that this is gonna work, I'm all for it. I don't need any more houses on it, anybody can go to the beach, I'm all for it, as long as we can afford it, as long as it makes sense, and as long as the people of the island want to have it done, because I represent you.
I have one last thing to say, I haven't really wanted to talk about the details of parking because, again, I don't have them yet. I wanna remind everybody what the parking committee started as last winter, when Woody was still here. It was to help make money to defray the costs of having day-trip people, visitors, on the beach. There was nothing else in the equation then. It was about trash pickup, it was about running the restrooms, it was about having the extra police to, you know, take care of crowds, things like that, and it was, I'll say, a rather modest amount of money. Then it became, we're gonna purchase the pier, and the public parking that went with the pier became part of the equation of, this will help defray the costs along with leasing the pier and the buildings once everything is taken care of. Then suddenly, it has become, we have to have a huge number of parking places for revenue, period, for all sorts of things. You see, it's, it's morphed from a defined, to help defray the costs, to define, help defray the costs plus it contributes to the pier paying for itself, and now all of a sudden, it's a multi-revenue stream, so it keeps changing, and as it changes, it keeps growing because you want more revenue. That was not the original idea, it has morphed. I agree with Mike strongly that one consideration needs to be, are we changing the nature of the island? And I'm gonna go even further and say, I don't wanna change the nature of any one place on the island. So the people who live on the east end and down around the central area, you're talking about putting all the parking burden on them, which over the years, I've always said, I don't feel we should do that, put all the burden in one place. What are you gonna do, create a beach slum area? Because that's what it starts to feel like. And so all the considerations have to be money and character and the local people's opinion. The island is a group of neighborhoods, and we don't have And we don't have all of that at the moment. We're going to have a money part of it. We're going to have a money part of it. But are we going to have the consideration of the nature of the different parts of the island and how those owners feel? We're not going to have that until we ask for it. So I, I am not just looking at parking as a revenue stream. I'm looking at it as it's part of our obligation to meet CAMA, FEMA, Army Corps, not requirements, but policies. And to make money to defray costs that are rational. Not just a revenue stream to help other things. Because I don't want to sacrifice the nature of this island any more than Mike does. It's why I came here.
I only have one comment. And we, we can't put a gate on the bridge. The people are going to come. It doesn't matter if we have paid parking, whatever. They're going to come. And we see a continuous increase in the number of people that come and visit the island. So it's, it's not where they go. And there's some like are immune, and some of the private sections, they don't have to be concerned about that. But the rest of the island, you know, they're going to, they're going to park anywhere they possibly can and get to the beach any way they possibly can. So we can't limit the number of people that come across that bridge. They're coming. That's my comment.
I didn't want this to be a parking bandwagon. We hadn't even had time to discuss it. Pat, I think you're out of line saying what you just said.
You started.
Let me, let me clear you up first. All the money that is collected from paid parking can be used. It is true that the parking lot, off-street parking, can go to one thing, and the home-street parking can be used for other purposes, which is what you just addressed. So all, all the money can't go to acquire property. So that's a correct statement you just made. There's very little, there's, there are little to no parking lots on the East End. I'm trying to acquire property, to put smaller parking lots on, not some giant thing. There is some that we could put a giant parking lot on, and it may make sense. But I still go back to the Army Corps guys saying it has to be spread out. Once those off-street parking lots, once it reaches a reasonable, we've used that word in here many times. Once it reaches a reasonable amount of parking spaces, I want to, if not totally, almost totally eliminate the possibility of people parking on the sides of these town streets, period. It's dangerous, it's unsightly, it's, you don't have facilities there, bathrooms, that type of thing. It, it doesn't support really, and I don't know, I was a part of the idea to, to put all the vehicles on the sides of the street, so I can't take, I can't take credit for that. I'm not a proponent of posting rope at all. I know that affords you the protection if somebody is parking in your right-of-way that you can do that. But I don't want to see that all over the island. People put it up, it's not maintained. You know, some kid's going to run into it with a bicycle and get hurt or something, you know? I, I think it looks terrible. But they put it up because they can put it up because parking's allowed in that space. I get it, I, I understand. Some people keep their yards manicured all the way to the sides of these streets. So if we had, if we had land acquired for off-street parking, then that would afford us the possibility of eliminating right-of-way parking. We can't do that now because we don't have a reasonable number of off-street parking. Not, nowhere, 190 spots is not a reasonable number to me. Four, five, 600 might be reasonable. I don't know what that number is. But it, there's many aerial views of this place on a, on a Ju, a July date. And there's, from the bridge to the East End, there's a thousand cars all over the place. Wherever they can stick one. The cops have a, they, they can't even enforce it. Not to mention the boat trailers and the boat ramp and all that. That's a whole nother problem we're going to face. I mean, as soon as there's no parking for those guys, then, then what are they supposed to do? It's not an easy problem to solve. That's why nobody solved it all these years. I, I can promise you, it's, it's just not simple. We haven't had parking committee meetings, by the way, because we didn't have a parking vendor selected. And without that vendor, those meetings were hopeless. We had the vendor one meeting, and we've got the answers to all of Board's tasks. One meeting, we got it done. Actually had two.
All right, I just want to redirect back to the motion along with the fact that the parking dimension is on the table about the first price.
I got it. I, I heard. So I would be glad to elaborate on parking. And I guess, hopefully it's on the agenda for Tuesday's meeting. I, I'm not dodging the issue by any means. So, and I, I would welcome the help in solving it, what you guys think. You know, because if you don't do anything, if you don't buy anything, they're, they're going to continue to park in your yards, or you're going to have a whole entire island full of posting rope. One of the two. Because every time they build a house, some parking spaces go away in the right-of-way. I mean, McCray Street gets from one end to the other. That's not town-owned property. That's, that's the right-of-way. And we're not trying to push a parking lot on, to any section of this island. We're not trying to shove it down somebody's throat. It's just where the land's available to put it. Unfortunately, that's, that's how we choose this stuff. So I, I'd rather talk about parking when we have all the, all the facts. But we can toss it around anytime people would like. I'd be glad to meet with any of them and listen because that's what I'm up here to do.
Okay, any more discussion about the pier?
So do you want a revised motion?
So I would, I would make the motion that we request the reduction in price of $500,000 based on the findings in the inspection report, and that we require a response from the seller by five, by 4:00 PM on Tuesday, the, whatever that is. Whatever day Tuesday is.
Madam Clerk, is that in harmony with the motion that was previously made?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so that's this point of order here. Then we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yes.
I would draw the earlier motion and resubmit the motion I just made.
Thank you, sir. Everybody understand where we are? Okay. First motion's off the floor, second motion's on the floor. Isn't now any discussion? Hearing none, are you ready to vote? Um, I would feel obligated, though I have been withdrawn from any discussion or participation about the pier. But I do feel like that I need to make everyone aware that all of the property that the pier has had for sale is under contract. One contract's with the town, and another contract's for the remaining lots, at a considerably higher price than the town's price per lot. So just for public record that everybody knows that. And that's all I'm going to say because I can't talk about and participate. But that's a fact that needs to be made public and needs to be stated herein before possibly you make your decision on how you're going to vote. So at that, is there anybody in here, in this room that has a reason that it's not time to vote on this motion? That we move on?
So I, I just want to, my opinion of this motion is that it's a harmless question to ask. And I want to make sure that that's the case, that it's not going to, it's just a...
We're not adding that it's a case of asking for every question, we'll have a response against it, and we're still under contract.
Okay.
All right. Everyone in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
No, opposed, say no. Unanimously approved. So, um, Mr. Sullivan, does that answer your wishes and hopes in regards to number four on the agenda?
Certainly does, thank you.
All right, are we ready to go back to number three on the agenda? Madam Clerk, you want to read that?
Yes, sir. Executive session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 1433181185 restricts the Stafford agent concerning the negotiation of the pricing terms and contracts concerning the acquisition of real property.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to go on the executive session.
Say it.
Uh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimously passed. Thank you all for being... Okay, we back in regular session?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Brown to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
You want to finish it up? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.